...your own, for all through your life you may dream of all. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Council Agency Member Francisco.
Here.
Pachkas.
Here.
House.
Here.
Sel.
Here.
White.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Chair Schneider.
Here.
Item one, Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this month we are honoring 21 employees with nearly three centuries of service with the city.[55.12][55.12](Laughter). And I'd like to read their names into the record, and we have two employees who are here to receive their pins directly from the mayor. First with five years, Josh Thompson, who's a PC network technician, too, in administrative services; Curtis Harrison, plans examiner in community development; Ryan DeGiulio, a fire inspector, too; Mark Cavalier, a welder/fabricator in public works; Teresa Lancy, who's a water resources specialist in public works; Carol Rollins, laboratory analyst, too, in public works; Kevin Strasberg, who's the parks project technician in Parks and Rec; Alberto Cuevas, who's an airport maintenance worker, too; and Stephen Spurlock, who's an airport patrol officer. With 10 years, Jeff Deming, animal control officer in the police department; Kim Johnson, who's a custodian at the airport; and Mick Cronman, who's the harbor operations manager at the waterfront. With 15 years, Roger Arroyo, who's a senior control systems operator specialist in public works. With 20 years, Vitrus Galarte, who's the project planner in community development; and Maricela Salinas, who's an associate planner in community development. With 25 years, Hank Humberg, who's a fire engineer; and Ed Stetson, who's a harbor patrol officer, too, at the waterfront. Also with 25 years to receive a pin in just a moment is Charlie McChesney, who was supposed to— who couldn't make it last month. With 30 years, also here to receive a pin is Frank Chacon, who's a fire captain; Bob Gardner, who's a fire engineer; and Don Ireland, senior real property agent, public works, and he'll actually be here next month. So we have two folks for pins, Charlie and Frank.
Sergeant McChesney, please come on up. Good to see you. There's your pin.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Charles McChesney started his career with the city of Santa Barbara as a harbor patrol officer in April 1985. He held the position of harbor patrol officer for a year and a half. During that time, he rescued imperiled windsurfers, recreational boaters, saved boats from sinking, fought a major war fire, and successfully resuscitated a man suffering total cardiac arrest. That's why he joined the police department. In January 1987, Charlie decided to join the police department, where he has worked a variety of assignments over his 23 years. In addition to being a patrol officer, Charlie has served full tours as a special investigations detective, field training officer, special events officer, founding member of the nightlife enforcement team, and training coordinator. Charlie also spent several years as a crisis negotiator and participated in developing the unusual occurrence manual and the department policy manual. Charlie was promoted to police sergeant in November 2005. As a sergeant, he's been a patrol supervisor and traffic supervisor. He currently supervises the training, recruitment, property evidence, and range equipment programs. Charlie's been recognized as one of the leaders of the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association since 1990, and has served two terms as president. It's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara, and on behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on your admirable achievement. Congratulations.[263.83][263.83](Applause).
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council members, when I first started with the city, I figured I would do this job as a police officer for about five years, then I'd quit and go make a lot of money and have a good career. But obviously, I've stuck around, and I've stuck around because it's a job that's easy to love. It's so easy to love because there's a lot of need. As blessed as we are to live in Santa Barbara, there still is a great need out there, and that's why it has just always been something, there's something to do. I remember about three years ago, I was a— working as field supervisor on a graveyard shift, and we were chasing a nighttime rooftop burglar. Somebody had broken into Cantwell's Market through the rooftop, and we were alerted to him by a silent alarm. Got there, he darted out, and the foot chase was on. This guy was a career criminal. I say that because he'd already been to prison for burglary, and he knew he was headed back if he got caught. He probably had about 15 years less than me under his belt, and I had about 15 pounds more than him over his belt, so when he went over that eight-foot wall, I just stopped and went the other way to go around it. That's what happens when you've been a police officer for 20-some-odd years. But fortunately, that night, as I looked around, there was a crew of about 10 or 12 officers, and all of them were senior officers that had been around for many years. It took us about 25 minutes, but we developed a noose around it, and we were able to work house to house, and we finally caught that guy, and he's still in prison today. He was a prolific burglar, he's a burglar no more, thanks to the experienced crew that we were working with that night. It's been my honor to work with several people throughout the city, all departments. There's a core group of employees that have been here 10, 15 years, Frank, people from public works, people from the waterfront. We all know each other. The citizens of Santa Barbara are well-served, and it's my honor to be among their company. Thank you.[387.31][387.31](Applause).
Madam Mayor, just a couple things that were left out is how brave Charlie can be sometimes even when he's not on duty, as evidenced by his experience with carpe gangsters last year, and what an avid cyclist he is, and just it's an honor to serve in this capacity with you, Charlie.
Okay, Captain Chacon, if you can come on up. There you go. Congratulations. Frank Chacon was born and raised in La Habra, California. Frank graduated from La Habra High School and attended Santa Barbara City College as a geology major. Frank started his career in fire service with the California Department of Forestry in San Luis Obispo County, where he was stationed at the Cayuco Station for two years. He was hired by the Santa Barbara Fire Department on May 3, 1980. Frank immediately stood out at the city during his first year for performing error-free in all phases of testing. By 1981, he was recognized as one of the Outstanding Fireman of the Year by the Host Lions Club for distinguishing himself as a firefighter, designing a wildland fire hose pack, and being involved in outreach recruitment. Frank was promoted to the rank of fire engineer on July 7, 1984. He became certified in the field of hazardous materials and became a crucial member of the hazardous materials team. In addition, he is qualified in urban search and rescue and airport rescue firefighting. On September 26, 1987, Frank was promoted to his current rank as fire captain. He's also certified to work as an acting battalion chief. Frank and his wife Jeanette reside in Galita and have three grown children, John, Ryan, and Alex. His hobbies include biking, backpacking, and surfing, and Frank's pleasant personality makes him an ideal working partner. Frank, you've been a dedicated and valuable member of the city of Santa Barbara, and it's an honor to recognize your 30 years of service, as well as your many personal and professional accomplishments. On behalf of the City Council and your fellow citizens, thank you and congratulations on this outstanding achievement. Thank you very much.[518.29][518.29](Applause).
I told people I wasn't going to have a speech, but I kind of put some notes together. So, Madam Mayor, Council members, I'm going to start this way. But we in it shall be remembered, we few, we happy few, we band of brothers, for he today that sheds blood with me shall be my brother. That was—I had to say that, because I always say that during barbecues or whatever, retirement dinners, so they— everybody's expecting it, "Do the band of brothers thing." But I've had the honor to work with people, and Shakespeare didn't realize that even women were going to be fighting fires, so he just put "band of brothers," but the women in this department have been great firefighters. I wasn't the kind of kid that dreamed of being a firefighter. I used to walk by the fire departments, right by the church, and I'd go to church and catechism and all that, and walk right by the fire station, look up, and just go, "I wonder what they do in there." Yeah, I didn't realize it, and I just— just lucky, I guess, took the job with the Forest Service and got stationed up in Cayuco, spent two years working hard, and decided to try and make it a career. And 30 years later, here I am. And part of it is because I'm always learning. I have in my helmet that little Latin saying, "Ancoro imparo," and that means I'm still learning, and that's the beauty of this job, and maybe that's why I like to come to it every day. I learn something every day, and it's a great— a great job to have. And I'd like to kind of give thanks to all past, present firefighters that I've worked with, and including the office staff, and there's a couple of them here, because they— without them, I couldn't have made 30 years. And I'd also like to include my friends that have helped me out and supported me, and, you know, especially all the coworkers that have not made it to 30 years. I know quite a few of my friends who died in the line of duty and didn't make it to 30 years, and I'm hope. I hope they're looking down at me now and thinking, "He earned it." But thank you. Thank you very much.[668.11][668.11](Applause).
Thank you, you definitely earned it, so.
Madam Mayor, I just want to take a second.
Mr. House.
Captain Chacon?
Yes.
Just—I just—I—you know I will never forget you, because you're the one that scooped me up off the ground when I got pretty crashed up, and I got to say how much I really appreciate, you know, and I'm speaking for as many people as I possibly can who got scooped up off the ground, plucked out of a tree, or wherever you get us. Thank you very much, and you do do your job with great sincerity and with that friendliness. And I'll tell you, there's nothing better than looking up at your face when you're hurting. Anyway, thank you very much, sir, for your service.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, we have a number of speakers. I'm putting two minutes up on the clock. We have Kenneth Locke to be followed by Nicolai Lambert.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I did a video today, and I put it up on YouTube, it's on my website, it's called Roger Federer Sold His Mind Body Soul. I think I've kind of maybe talked about this back some of the past years, but to understand the concept of what it means to have a soul, I can provide the means for understanding that in relation to the integration of the mind and body. This is based on—to actually understand that integration, you have to understand it, what it is in relation to who. And again, what I provide the means is for— through the means of tennis, to actually understand this integration. Now, in relation to the mind and body, it's based on having complete knowledge in relation to the complete exercise. It's like a standard, educational standard, knowledge, relationship. I'm sorry to say that historically, tennis hasn't had this—the means for that, and that's what I'm— my project's called Tennisance, the Renaissance of Tennis, and 21st Century. And—but the soul is based on, now, I've kind of redeemed my soul, and the service that I'm here to provide, everyone is knowledge, I'm going to teach and heal the likes of Roger Federer. And I'm hoping that he's able to actually understand this, as well as everybody, and kind of get on board on this. And again, this is like 21st century, and again, my project's called tennisance.net, and thank you.
Thank you. Nicolai Lambert will be followed by David Lang.
Madam Mayor, City Council.
Move that mic right down, there you go.
I'm sure that you're all very well aware of what's going on in Arizona right now with the immigration law just passed by the governor, and I ask that you take into consideration adapting something similar here in Santa Barbara, because our law enforcement need tools to combat immigration, maybe even start out with something—if somebody is stopped for an infraction, and they're not legal, then start the deportation process, or, you know, something. Because in this economy, we have to take care of ourselves and worry about other people when we're able to. Thank you.
David Lang will be followed by Ruth Wilson.
Madam Mayor, Council. I come today as a resident of Santa Barbara. I came here in 1963. More to the point, I've been watching the condition of our air in Santa Barbara the last four years. The last four years seems to have brought on quite a bit of density to it, in a matter of particulates, that sort of thing. So what I did today was I printed and distributed some photos that I took personally, they're all date stamped with locations. They show quite a bit, to my eyes, what can only be called a fallout of some sort of airborne black particulate. It's—you can see where—if you study closely, you will see that how much it adheres to any surface that has any sticky surfaces, whether it be tree sap, collection of water, that sort of thing from landscaping. But that's just an indicator of what is likely out there, because if this is just what is collected, that means there's been a lot out there, tons, that is in the community. It gets redistributed almost every day. And it concerns me that I haven't heard anything from civil government or the media on what seems to be, to me, a very obvious condition, and I really think it's very important that you, as members of civil government, get together with other members, because this is a regional problem. If you take a look at any Air Now map from the EPA Air Now website, you will see that Southern California, the Central Valley, Bakersfield, Los Angeles, San Diego, all the way to Point Conception is one big airshed, because often under some sort of coloration that describes less than healthy conditions.
You wind up, please.
So please, thank you very much for your time, and I encourage you to further investigate this matter.
Okay. Ruth Wilson will be followed by Jeremy Pemberton.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, there sure are a lot of concerns today, you know, international, national, local concerns, state and local, but you know, we really don't have to give in to fear. And I want to read an excerpt from this book, it's a very good book, "Who I Am in Christ" by Neil Anderson. Abuse of power and position has left many people fearful of authority figures. Many times, children are afraid to approach their parents, employees are intimidated by their bosses, and some church members fear confrontation with legalistic leaders. People often project the reaction of human authority onto God. If they can't approach their under-shepherds, how can they approach God? But God is not like that. He is love, and the punishment we deserved was placed upon His only Son. This is what the Bible says in 1 John. God is love. Whoever lives in love lives in God, and God in Him. In this way, love is made complete among us, so that we will have confidence on the day of judgment, because in this world, we are like Him. There is no fear in love, but perfect love drives out fear, because fear has to do with punishment. The one who fears is not made perfect in love. So let's hear it for love. I think that is the answer, to not succumb to fear, and to really solve our issues. And so I pray a blessing on you today, that you would be open, your eyes and your ears, to what God is saying, and that you would move out into this community in perfect love. And I also want to tell you, I think you are very approachable.
Jeremy Pemberton will be followed by Joshua Pemberton.
Madam Mayor, Council members, thank you for your time. My name is Jeremy Pemberton, president of Twin Productions, organizer of the West Beach Music and Arts Festival, held annually on West Beach the past few years. I started calling Santa Barbara home more than seven years ago, when my father's 20-year paving business went under. I moved here from San Jose with my brother at the age of 18. We had nothing. We worked to put ourselves through school. I attended SBCC and UCSB. I worked at several retail and restaurant businesses throughout town. Three years ago, the West Beach Festival was born. We have had many trials and tribulations since then, many of which most new or small businesses would experience. We have never walked away from a debt we owe. We have invested three years of our life, working 60- to 70-hour work weeks, trying to establish the festival for Santa Barbara. This festival is our livelihood, and we have invested everything into it. I don't own a car, I ride public transportation. I'm an active member of the Host Lions Club, an active member of CVV, Chamber of Commerce, Young Professionals Club, amongst others. I'm invested in this community. I want to promote a festival that meets the needs of our community and is appropriate for Santa Barbara. There has been concerns of the type of acts we have promoted and the messages they are bringing to our community. I have the same concerns. This experience was a lesson learned. We are asking the city to please allow us to show you that we can correct the concerns of sound message and security. I want to promote a festival that is sustainable and that will be around for my children and my family. For public information, we have scheduled an appeal hearing set for Wednesday, May 19, at 7:00 PM at Gerber Hall located at 630 State Street—or, excuse me, Garden Street. Festival supporters, please attend this meeting and show the commission of support this festival has from our community. Concerned citizens, speak to us. We are willing and wanting to listen and address the concerns of each person. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Pemberton, the final speaker will be Kate Smith. I think you meant Get Part Room at 630 Garden. Yeah, okay.
Madam Mayor, Council members, thank you for the opportunity for me to come before you. As a local resident, business owner, council-appointed committee member, and active voter of this community, I'm appreciative for the work you do day in and day out. We are excited to have our opportunity to be heard throughout the permitting process for West Beach Festival, and it has been encouraging to receive so much support over this past week. We are looking forward to May 19, and I would like to invite you all to come and be present. In the coming weeks and for the past few months, we have and will be actively addressing the community and stakeholders for the festival. Again, it has been extremely encouraging, the responses that we've been receiving. We are excited to present real solutions for the perceived problems. I want to thank Captain Chacon and Sergeant McChesney for their efforts and for their contributions to this community, and Captain Chacon said something in particular, "Cauto imparo." He's constantly learning new things. Allow us to learn and move forward, and it is our desire to walk into that meeting on the 19th with the endorsement of city staff, and we will do our best to earn that over the coming weeks. Thank you for your time.
And the final speaker will be Kate Smith.
And Captain Chacon said something in particular, Cotto Emparo, he's constantly learning new things. Allow us to learn and move forward, and it is our desire to walk into that meeting on the 19th with the endorsement of city staff, and we will do our best to earn that over the coming weeks. Thank you for your time.
And the final speaker will be Kate Smith.
There is deep-seated and widespread corruption in Santa Barbara County. There is abuse of process and abuse of power. There is nonfeasance, misfeasance, and malfeasance. There is an unholy alliance between the schools, juvenile justice, law enforcement, and 47 nonprofits that feed at the public funding trough. Taxpayer-paid lawyers collude, conspire, and cover up wrongdoing. I ran for the Santa Barbara School District's Board of Education, was illegally removed from the ballot. Still, I received 17,500 votes. I am announcing my candidacy, right-in candidacy, for the second supervisory district seat, held now by Janet Wolf. I am running for the second supervisory district on a platform to expose school and government corruption, to reform education, and restore justice and democracy in our schools and community. Please visit sbschooltalk.com and read my Declaration of Commitment, a full-page political ad, very similar to this Declaration of Commitment, that begins, "We, the people of Santa Barbara, in order to form a more perfect community." A full-page political ad was published on June 4, 1998, in the Santa Barbara Independent. I will be republishing that Declaration of Commitment, and I will be publishing my campaign literature from my 2000 candidacy for the Santa Barbara School District's Board of That was a republishing of Apple ads, most successful campaign. Here's to the crazy ones. And it ends, "For those who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are the ones who do." I would also like you to know-
They wind up, Kate.
Okay. This morning, I spoke from the Planning Commission podium because I am restrained from speaking truth to power at the Board of Supervisors. So I discussed my commitment to Satya Grahah, that's Gandhi's nonviolent philosophy, and I will read the last paragraph. Seeing my intention, because Satya Grahah is apparently, two apparently opposite attributes, fierce autonomy and total compassion. Seeing my intention, sensing my compassion, and my openness to your needs, you will respond in ways I could never manage by threat, bargaining, pleading, or brute force. Together, we can solve our problems. Thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment. We have the consent calendar, I believe you have some items to read.
Item two, amendment to the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2009 to '10, affecting the airport, community development, library, public works, and waterfront departments, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 09044, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2009 to '10, affecting the airport, community development, library, public works, and waterfront departments effective April 20, 2010. Item three, records destruction for Parks and Recreation Department, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Parks and Recreation Department in the administration, Parks and Recreation Divisions. Item four, introduction of ordinance for Architectural Board of Review 2010, membership provisions, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Section 2268010 of Chapter 2268 of Title 22 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code relating to the composition of the Architectural Board of Review and transitioning the board from nine members to seven members. Item five, adoption of ordinance approving quick claim deed for city strip of land at 314 West Ortega Street, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a quick claim deed to release any fee interest within Mission Creek, located on a portion of the real property at 314 West Ortega Street, as described in a deed recorded on February 27, 1912, in Book 134 of Deeds at page 403, and authorizing the Public Works Director of the City to execute the same. Item six, adoption of Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Titles 22 and 28 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code relating to the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, Single Family Residence Parking Design Standards, and the expiration of design review approvals. And item eight, set a date for public hearing regarding renewal of levy for fiscal year 2011 for the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to renew the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment within the foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be of more than general or ordinary benefit, and describing the district to be assessed to pay the costs and expenses thereof, preliminarily approving the updated engineer's report stating intention to levy assessments for fiscal year 2010 to '11, and establishing a time of 2:00 PM on Tuesday, May 25, 2010, in the city council chambers for a public hearing on the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll weigh further reading. Mr. House.
I believe I'm not alone, and there's a couple of us that will need to step down from item number eight, so I ask that that be taken off the, off consent.
Okay, so you'll abstain from that. I believe yourself and Mr. White and Mr. Hotchkiss are in the same boat. Good thing there are four of the rest of us here. That's the Wildland Fire Suppression District.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And unless there's other comment, I'll move the rest of the consent calendar except number eight.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, and then-
I'll move item eight.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And abstentions?
Abstaining.
Three abstentions. Okay. That concludes the consent calendar. The report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Williams.
Finance Committee met at 12:00 today at the Get Part Room, and we reviewed the proposed changes to fees in the library, Parks and Rec, and golf fund, and even more fascinating fees concerning the fire department. And essentially, these would be new and different and would be assessed on, I would say, non-emergency response efforts that involve people at fault, non-residents at fault, and it would require an ordinance, so ordinance committee will see that. But most importantly, it would provide $100,000 worth of revenue a year, which would, of course, help us in our efforts to maintain adequate emergency response and staffing for any and all fire emergencies and, you know, health emergencies that the fire department responds to. We also saw the proposed changes in PBIA. The Finance Committee has no recommendation at this point, it was not an action item, but we had plenty of questions, and we'll see some added details when it comes to council.
Okay, thank you. Item number 13.
Contract for construction of the Santa Barbara Airport Airline Terminal Passenger Boarding Bridges.
Thank you. Ms. Ramsdale.
Good afternoon. This is Owen Thomas with the Public Works Department, and we're here for a couple reasons today. First, to take care of some business regarding the contract for passenger boarding bridges, and we're about 20% complete with the construction of the building at this time, and so we thought it'd be a good time to provide an update on the project, how everything's going. So Karen will take care of that. We're recommending that JBT Aerotech be awarded a contract to provide three passenger loading bridges. That's the connection from the airplane directly to the terminal. And there are the glass-type loading bridges, as opposed to the steel tubes. And we got two good, solid bids on that, so everything was pretty much as we expected, and we're recommending that the award be made to the low bidder, so unless you have any questions, that's it.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Yeah, thank you. Are these open-air or totally enclosed?
They're totally enclosed.
Okay, so when rain, you're not going to get wet, can you?
Yeah, they're fully enclosed, it's just the sides are glass, so you can see out and you can see down.
Okay, how many gates? This will serve three gates? How many total gates will we have there?
We have five.
Five, thank you.
Ms. Self?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What is the maintenance on the glass versus metal, coming from a house with a lot of windows?
There is an increased, you know, maintenance cost on that, and I think at this point, I don't know if we've established, you know, what we expect the annual cost to be, but it's kind of like a skylight or solar panels, occasionally they do have to be washed.
Are they as, do they have the life of a steel one also, the durability aspect?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Do you want to go through your update first, and then we'll-
Take a vote.
-finish with the vote? Okay. You caught me off-guard when you already asked for questions, so it's okay, because we have a good update. Go right ahead.
As Owen said, we thought this was an appropriate time to update you on the construction, and if you haven't been out to the site, I have some photographs to show you that I think are quite impressive. This stage of our, or this phase of our project, and this is the third phase, the first we did the aircraft parking ramp, the second we did site preparation and soil preparation, and this third phase is a $33 million contract with Emma Construction. As Owen said, the construction is 20% complete, and we've used about 17% of our change order allowance, so I think we're doing pretty good so far. Some of the delays that we've had are just related to weather. The construction schedule in the white print are parts of the project that have already been completed, and yellow is what we're working on right now, and then the light blue is what will follow this summer and fall. And I don't expect you to read, and I'm not going to read every single item, but just to show you all of the items that need to be completed, and then we would move in between February and March of 2011, and then hopefully have our grand celebration in April of 2011. This construction schedule is on our website, flySVA.com, and we update it regularly if there are any changes, so I would encourage the public, if they're interested, to go to our website and not only look at the photos of the construction, but there's a lot of good information on the website. Now I'm going to show you some construction photos. Also on our website, City TV has been videoing the various phases from the very beginning of the project, and I would encourage anybody that would like to kind of follow the project along, again, to visit the website and view the videos. In this phase of construction, the steel, structural steel is being erected. About 30 truckloads and 1.3 million pounds of steel has been delivered to the site and is being erected as we speak. The building is supported by steel beams on steel columns, and along with other structural systems, this goes towards the building being able to withstand earthquake and wind forces. And this is where they were pouring the slab on the first floor, and next week they will start pouring the concrete slab on the second floor. So it's really coming along quite nicely. This is a shot of the roof deck being installed, and there are about 500 steel beams in the second floor and roof framing portions of the building. I kind of like these little factoids, it makes it kind of interesting. The following views, I tried to compare the architectural renderings with what stage the steel is being erected, so you can kind of see how the building is taking shape. And this is the street view, if you were standing in front of the terminal at the front curb or in the short-term parking lot. This is on the air side. The loading bridges that we were just speaking of would come from three of those windows that you see on the ramp side. And you can see the existing terminal to your left with a red tile roof. This is the new terminal north view. From the windows on the north, you'll be able to see views of the San Yenés Mountains, and Owen was telling me he's been up on the second floor, and the views are spectacular from up there. This is the view looking south toward the ocean. And we've also had other activities going on. The construction people aren't the only ones that are busy. These are what the glass loading bridges look like. And Colleen, Texas was the first airport in the United States to install these type of loading bridges. They're all over Europe and Canada, they're nothing new. We may be the second or third in the United States to have the glass loading bridges. Next week, actually, we received bids for the baggage conveyor system, and the baggage conveyor system is when you check the bag at the airline counter. Now they'll no longer be screened in the lobby, they'll go behind the scenes, and go along the conveyor through the TSA security machines, and then out to the baggage carts, and then the ramp workers will take the luggage and put them on the airplane. And that awarded bid will come to you on next week's agenda. We are putting together the specs for our flight information display, or FIDS, as we call them, and that tells you when your flight, if your flight's on time, when it's leaving, what gate it's boarding from. Passenger seating, we've also selected the seating from Herman Miller, but we won't actually order the seating till closer to when it opens, so that we don't have to store it in the meantime, and our seating will be brown vinyl or leatherette instead of the black to go with the decor of the new terminal. We've also put out a request for proposal and received proposals for food and beverage services, Gift and News, and First Class Concessions was selected for the food and beverage services, and they are collaborating with Coffee Bean &amp; Tea Leaf, and will have a Coffee Bean &amp; Tea Leaf on the first floor for kind of quick service, and it would be open to the, you know, the public as well as ticketed passengers. And then upstairs, they propose a restaurant and a small Coffee Bean &amp; Tea Leaf up there as well. And then the gift shop, ME Incorporated, which is a locally-owned Gift and, Gift and News retail firm, and they have several stores in the area, they are local, and they are the current gift shop operators, have been selected. We are just beginning contract negotiations with them, so I would expect within the next 30 days or so that we would be bringing this to you in a lot more detail. The public arts program, we put out a request for proposal, received 13 teams that proposed on three projects. One was embellishments to the wrought iron railing in the terminal, another was a floor medallion in the entry of the north rotunda entrance to the airline ticketing area, and the other was stenciling of the beams throughout the new terminal. As I said, and we have narrowed that down to six teams, and then finally this last week, selected teams to, the final teams to do those three projects. On the selection committee was represented the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission, representative from the 3rd District, City Arts Commission, or Committee, excuse me, Visual Arts and Public Places Committee, and it was really a delight working with those groups to launch our public arts program. The lantern, which is, will be on long-term loan from the Courthouse Legacy Foundation, is being restored by Halyard Studios, and the lantern is over six feet tall. It was in the Hall of Records at the courthouse when they rehabilitated it, and they discovered a skylight, so they took the lantern down, stuffed it in the basement of the courthouse, and it gathered dust for a number of years. And so now they're making it really beautiful and how it was originally. We are also working with the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance Program to have youth that are associated with that program design and paint a mural for the construction fence. And they've come up with this concept of doing large postcards that represent aviation as well as different features in the Santa Barbara area, and they've just gone through the kind of planning phase of it and are starting on the design. And this program assists youth in the criminal justice system to extricate themselves from the system by providing community service projects that develop positive relationships with schools, their families, law enforcement, and their peers. So we're very pleased to be working with these young people, they're very, very talented. This probably should have gone more toward the beginning, but we have met with the airlines to refine their layout of their counter and operation space. We've also met numerous times with the TSA to finalize the layout required for passenger and checked bag screening. Right after we finished design and got their initial approval, they switched their standards or they updated them, so we had to kind of redesign their space in order to accommodate the new layout. But we were successful in being able to do that. And again, I would encourage anybody that would like to keep up with the progress on the project to go to flySVA.com, and if they have any questions, they certainly can call my office.
Great. We might not want to take that construction fence down, that looks really cool-
I know, exactly.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Hi, Ms. Ramsdale. Thank you very much, very exciting. How do we handle concession pricing? My experience at airports is that it starts at one level and doesn't stay there very long, and unless there's competition, it goes through the roof, coffee or whatever.
Right. In our small terminal, we, in our RFP, we ask that it be as close to street pricing as possible, which means as close to what's offered in the local area. So for instance, Coffee Bean &amp; Tea Leaf should be offering coffees that are similar in price to what you could buy in, you know, their store in Galito or downtown Santa Barbara. We are way too small to have any kind of competition, you know, multiple coffee concessions in the terminal, so we really have to rely on setting some parameters. We can't set the exact price, but we can say that it has to be kind of comparable to local street price.
And when do we blow the whistle on that? That's largely open to interpretation.
Well, we keep pretty close watch on their menus, their prices, and they're supposed to, when they change, they're supposed to notify us and get approval for even change of menu.
Okay, I mean, we have two sources of coffee, for instance, here, a restaurant and then something downstairs, so that in fact could be competition. Is it deemed inadvisable to have it under two separate managements?
And like, as I said, in our small terminal, it's really too small to have two separate concessionaires, and some airports are size, the gift shop and the restaurant, and all concessions are under one company, but we elected to split it up and have it under two different companies. Upstairs, they will also be offering the Coffee Bean brand of coffees.
Right, but what's our recourse if we have an objection?
All we can do is work with them. You know, I mean, we can't fix prices, so-
How long is their contract for?
We're going to propose it be for 10 years.
Okay, that seems to me kind of long and locks you into a situation that you have a little control over. I don't doubt the good intentions, but I just know the way these things tend to go. It might be worth looking into this a little bit closer to ensure that people are not paying $5 for a cup of coffee that they have to throw away when they go through security.
Well, they won't have to throw it away, we'll have coffee upstairs, so they'll, when they go through security, they'll be upstairs, they'll be able to buy food, coffee, whatever they want, they won't have to throw it away.
But you get my point about the $5 cup of coffee?
Oh, I certainly do, and we have those issues now. When we bring this before you, we'll have a lot more detail for you.
Okay, because I'm going to be looking at that for sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Heads up. Mr. House.
We'll name a latte after you.
Hotchkiss Latte.
Yeah. I've already got-
A Frank, it's a Frank Cup of Joe, how's that? A Frank Cup of Joe. There we go.
So I just wanted to, as the liaison to the Airport Commission, I've had a chance to watch a little bit of this as it's been going along, and of course, way back during the design conversation, it's just amazing and wonderful to see it happening, you know, it's just, it's so great, and to see the girders going up and the whole thing happening. Of course, the glass boarding bridges, the sky bridges are just incredible, I'm just so glad, that didn't look likely.
Right.
I mean, and we managed to get the, into the favorable bidding environment and succeed there, so I'm just really glad. And the other piece, we had talked early on about how important art that really reflected the community spirit was in here, and it's not just the temporary kind of art installation, but your, the design is institutionalizing in the inside there and outside too, so I'm just saying a lot of happy things, I'm really glad. And I wanted, since nobody else has lights on, to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
And the motion is to award the contract, the JBT, and also authorize the change order funding. I'll second that, all right. And again, thank you very much to the staff and to everyone who's worked on this thing. This is just really going to be a great gateway to the South Coast.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Looking forward to April 2011. Any council member committee assignment reports last week from city-related committees? Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a partial report. The Planning Commission has taken up Plan Santa Barbara and has had two lengthy sessions, some very meaty input, and by- some very meaty input and by, from the public, and then now the Planning Commission deliberations are, are underway. And they're, they're working hard at it. That's, that's what I can say there. I think that the, the concerns remain about, you know, how are we going to get to pull this thing together into a consensus package without spending too much staff time and too much, and therefore dollars? And that continues to be, I think, a concern in everybody's mind.
They did a good job last week. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, I wanted to continue to update the council on various issues about water and the Kachuma Operations Maintenance Board and, and the Kachuma Conservation and Release Board. Latest issue coming up is one in which the county, for facilities, in order to get a grant to help pay for facilities up at Kachuma Lake, requires COME or CCRB to list some of our existing projects as matching funds for some of the linked projects. But other board members and other agencies have decided that it's, that's a good way to try to leverage discussions with the county on other issues. However, the deadline for those grants are now fast approaching, so it, it looks like there'll be another little interesting matter before COME and CCRB at our next meeting, which either is at the end of this month, or depending on the deadline with the county, might have to be sooner than that.
Okay, thank you. I had the pleasure of going to Arbor Day at Adams School on Friday morning, and I bring that up because also during that day was the first day that school started food scraps in their cafeteria, and so they're, including their utensils and plates, and so our own environmental services is coordinating that, and Eric Lolea from our department estimates that Adams School will save $18,000 in trash fees over one year because of it. So that's great partnership there. That was, and I know, Mr. House, thank you for taking my spot at Marymount School for Arbor Day there.
Hey, Arbor Day.
Yeah, there we go.
Those kids are something else.
Yeah, they were fun. We have a number of closed sessions, if you want to read those.
Item 14, conference with real property negotiators. Item 15, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. And item 16, public employee performance evaluation per Government Code Section 54957.
Okay, I don't expect we'll be, have to report anything out, so we are going to adjourn to Monday, May 10, at 1:30 at 825 Delavina Street for a site visit, and I'd like to adjourn today in honor of two individuals, Christie Stanley and Judge McLaFerty, two people who were stalwarts for law, justice, and public service for decades in Santa Barbara County, so we'd like to adjourn in their honor. Thank you.